Was gonna hold me water.
If we get it there, if we can look, Julie can look for any other revenue sources or revenue adjustments, that would be good, but I think it has to be in the budget because the working group, which will result in some recommendations and everything, and then eventually an RFP, if we go forward with this, to try to get the extra money in October. And that's not gonna get done by the time we get the budget done, so I think the new honest budgeting, you have to have it in there before we finalize the budget. The last thing is, Jimmy made a good point last night, we talked about the solar farm about Bucks County. I forget the comment you made, something about number lagging behind or something?
We have a little history.
And this is not an area we wanna lag behind in without all the calls I get from people, especially during this time that schools being closed with lack of internet, so. I think it's a hundred thousand times more important than that solar farm we approved last night, so.
Can you go electricity?
And that's no, that's no hit on the solar farm, I'm just saying this is a really important issue. The, I was told today by somebody in Forsyth, that in Forsyth and Davidson County, they're doing a survey of their students who asked them to go to school on the internet. This evolved to reduce the class size for the ones who can't go, can't do the internet, so. That's one way, I don't know if Dr. Rice has been asked to do that, but Bucks County's are looking at, at, you know, at this as an, as an option to reduce the class size until the virus thing goes away or whatever it's gonna do. The, you know, internet connectivity has kind of been my number one issue ever since I've been dealing with local government. I think we are definitely in a position where we have to keep, keep it moving forward. I just don't understand how you can even hardly survive these days without having some internet capability at your house. Just few people are still doing it now, I guess they just ride around till they can find it somewhere, basically is what they're doing. That's not very fair to our citizens, I guess, but that's all I have to say about it for now. We're gonna discuss it at the regular meeting, but we'll call it till then.
I can't support five hundred thousand dollars in the budget for internet this year, no way.
I'll insist on five hundred K will be my position. I make a very strong argument to do so.
I'm making an argument, we can't afford it.
Can't afford not to do it, Ernest.
Yeah, we can.
No, we can't.
We got the internet.
They ain't got internet, they're all, the county don't have internet.
We can, they didn't keep them out.
We got internet.
Kinda move on with it.
I'm sorry, I'll let the board decide what they do. The board position.
Sure.
Do you think?
I don't know, put some thought into this, even though it's brain fault with all the allergies and everything. One thing that concerns me is, we have another company in Stokes County. They've been.
They're entrepreneurs.
They're also local, and they've been getting some traction. I think they're up to a hundred and sixty some class, and have plans for adding another, well, getting up close to three hundred in the future. And one, one thing that I've kind of stumbled with others sort of kind of speed bump for me is, how can we justify supporting one provider at the expense of another provider? And could, could, it's Stokes Wi-Fi is the company I'm referring to, and there may be some others out there I don't even know about. But I've had people tell me that they're very pleased for Stokes Wi-Fi's service, they're filling the ditch. And, and what we would be doing if we put everything toward River Street, seems like we would be favoring one provider and creating competition for the other provider. And I don't know how we deal with that, I, I don't know for that, for that line of fault. If you would just kinda hold your thought, I would go to Father, maybe he can answer it, another thing or two at the same time. But I was wondering, given circumstances like I've described, is this something that a work group could address?
Oh, yeah.
How they would sort of view leveling the playing field as much as possible? Because I don't wanna cause somebody's odds of favoring another company. And in particular, when these people got out there and tried, they've got it together to some extent, they, they, they're getting some real traction now from what I've heard and understand. And I'm wondering if, if it can be worked out somehow so that we don't discourage useful folks or harm what they're doing, and, and maybe we help River Street at the same time. But as Commissioner, I think we're suggesting, we, we don't know, you know, five hundred is a mountain, and Mr. Morris says he's real strong on five hundred. I, I don't know if we look at ways to find out what the other company needs, what, what would really get them going, factor that into the five hundred, or hope for additional money to help Stokes Wi-Fi with. I, I'm not sure what the answer is, I guess that's why we have a, a market. But there's questions to me beyond just whether or not we give five hundred to River Street.
We're not gonna give five hundred.
What will we do?
See, the issue is, is if you, if you're gonna start picking winners and losers like Stokes Wi-Fi, then you gotta ask how much you're gonna give to Time Warner, how much you're gonna give to Windstream, how much you're gonna give to all these other people that provide service in the county. The issue is not us leveling the playing field between private companies and the co-op. Go back and look at the history of co-ops, co-ops for telephone, they used to be called rural telephone co-ops, I think, that's what.
That, that, oh.
In power too, and they, they derived, they were derived from the power co-ops. They were put in place to level the playing field between us and the municipalities in the heavy populated areas. But the playing field's already been leveled by allowing the co-ops to have the advantages they have, because that's the only way rural people can get internet. So, so that's, that, the level playing field is basically done by the statutes and the fact that they let co-ops exist in the first place. And that we're gonna give, we're gonna do an RFP, so we're gonna, we're gonna do a request proposal, every one of those private companies can bid on it. If one of them comes in and says, I'll give you six hundred thousand, match it, and do, and I'll reinvest all of my profits in Stokes County extended in that world, and they, they win. But I'm not sure how a Wi-Fi company could come in and, and give you Wi-Fi service and then follow it with fiber, since they don't do fiber. And we, and I don't wanna give up our fiber, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta realize what, what is the best value for the residents of Stokes County, period, that's the whole, that's what the whole RFP has to do. And you know, if, how do I know Stokes Wi-Fi's not gonna take all the profits and go put it into Crystal Coast LLC? That's their other company on the coast. Stokes Wi-Fi has two companies, they're not just Stokes Wi-Fi. Yeah, they got a whole thing in Emerald Isle Beach where they're doing Wi-Fi. But we know, just based on the River Street business well already, if they, or win the RFP, they're gonna reinvest everything back in the county, that's the advantage they have by being a co-op.
They said, now, I won't go on record saying they are, I won't, they said they was gonna invest it back to, to the county. So, I'm just gonna say.
You just take a headache on that, because all the people come saying, you said they was gonna do this.
They said they were gonna do, that's what they.
They are doing, I mean, that's what they do with all their customers. They invest the Wills County stuff back in Wills County, they invest the Patrick County back in Patrick County, whatever, that's their business model, it can be verified very easily. And probably, probably, you know, Storytale Com over there could bid on this.
They're working West River Street.
Yeah, they, yeah, they are, but, but they would only be bidding for their area of the county because they can't do the whole, the whole rest of the county.
River Street seems like. Mr. Morris, that River Street has gone up to a certain, was nine, very, you know, that line from Minnesota, never reached.
No, they, they, those are specified by law, those geographic areas, it's not an agreement between the two of them.
But it's, it's.
One's not allowed to infringe on the other's area, as part of that typical telephone communication stuff.
Well, then the county, do you know what part of the county Stokes Wi-Fi can claim at their service? And that's just one part, it says our service?
Now, some of it would overlap, I'm sure. But I, you know, but I mean, that gives the resident, the residents can buy it from Stokes Wi-Fi instead of River Street if there happens to be a conflict, just be competition there, whatever the price was, I guess, and how.
But would you, would you say, or would you agree possibly, possibly, that if we do end up funding River Street, that we're sort of tilting the odds in their favor competitively?
But the RFP is designed to sort all that out, that's why the law requires us to do an RFP, give everybody a chance to bid.
Would this bidding process occur?
Just like we did it before.
You, you put it in this buckle of the school?
Yeah, yeah, that's all history, man.
History, and I've not even gonna mention it.
Really doesn't matter much since we got it.
It's like, oh, it's all a saga. But when it comes time to bid, can River Street bid on a certain part of the county and Stokes Wi-Fi bid on another part, or does it have to be all or none?
No, RFP will bid for everything, I guess, except we wouldn't put the Surrey stuff in, because that's a separate area. We'd basically just do an RFP, just like we did the last time.
Anybody want to use the county money and these companies put it out there?
Yeah, but the RFP, the RFP process is designed to give everybody a chance to bid and give us the best value based on what we put in, and there's our requirements, so.
Do you think there's any possibility, and you don't have a crystal ball, and I realize this, but do you think there's any possibility that River Street can figure out a way to work with Stokes Wi-Fi in some ways? Particularly to say, you're already set up and you're in good shape to provide service to this area right here. They're gonna let you keep providing service.
Well, that'd be an Eric Kramer request.
Exactly, if you went pretty far, you go ahead.
But they got, I mean, they own five, they own five or, five or six Stokes Wi-Fi, I mean, already, so. I'm sure, I mean, that tells me they have a history of dealing with them, but beyond that, I have no idea what kind of arrangements companies do like that, that gets beyond my level. And my, and my reason for the five hundred K is because we're getting matched five hundred K. Every, everything we reduce under that five hundred K is that much we just lost of external money. And then that also reduces the amount we can possibly get in October. And the only way to do these projects is using other people's money. I mean, if, if you start doing stuff that cuts you down on the amount of the other people's money you can get, then you're slowing the project down, you're not doing as much as you could do, so you can explain that to everybody that needs internet.
I gotta budget last, get back to the budget. We, we still have some questions that, oh, we think we might have to answer two, so I'm not sure we even think we might have to. I was setting up a work group, since this money would have to come basically from two different sources, either at or a fund balance, if we decide to do this based on a recommendation of the work group, we would still be doing the same thing we're doing now by taking it down the fund balance.
Or somewhere, unless Julia wants to revise some of the revenue estimates or.
Well, Steve York's.
It's time I know.
Or we can, or if we wanted to reduce something else, we're on the budget, I mean, there.
The only thing is, I have two hundred thousand dollars sitting in cap reserve under economic development. Those, that was for feasibility studies. The board wanted to decide the way, you know, use that for something else, that's up to the board. And this five hundred thousand, I'm just asking, do you want me to go ahead and put it in the budget, or you want me to wait and do a budget amendment? I mean, it's, it's up to the board.
One of the reasons I think it needs to be in the budget, if you know you're gonna spend something, or if there's a high probability you're gonna spend it, not putting it in the budget becomes kind of dishonest budgeting. And then the OSA thing, and we'd have to ask Eric Kramer this, he may have said it the other night, but I'm not sure until we commit to the five hundred that he's gonna pay the eighty thousand to do the propagation study. Y'all remember if he said, they're gonna just move forward with it anyway? I think he's, he said.
They were gonna pay for it, I know, but I don't know if he said they were starting until they were sure that we were gonna be interested in moving forward with them.
And do we actually have an idea, I know there's a lot of them in certain areas, but do we actually have an idea how many households want internet in the county, does anybody know to answer that question?
I think he said five thousand.
Five thousand people has expressed interest in getting internet?
They're into their math and what they, they've covered other sources or other providers that cover. Total everything up, there were about five thousand people who need the internet that don't, or have very limited services that's only for certain things and not adequate for all, pretty adequate for them.
I know, I, I know everybody's not on the face of the bill, I'm trying to pay attention to some of the stuff on there. I'm commenting a whole lot, just like reading through and see who else. Last I seen, this was a Stokes Wi-Fi thing, and I seen a River Street thing. If you put the two together, it looked like it was like a total of a hundred and twenty-seven people or households that was on the internet. That's not even, I mean, that's less than double what River Street has now, and a lot less than what Wi-Fi, Stokes Wi-Fi has right now. I'm, I'm sure there's more out there, but if it was five thousand households under service, you figured you'd see a whole lot more than that, mentioned something about.
I, I might be wrong on that number, that's just what you mentioned, did we know, seem to recall Eric Kramer.
Yeah.
mentioning that, that number. And, and internet access is, is a high priority for me.
It's the way you live in there.
It's, it's, you know, it's just something people really need and want. And, and I'm very much in favor of trying to find the best ways to, to address that need. I just don't wanna stammer toes and, and look back and say, well, we should do that all day, but it just don't seem quite right, so. If we can get it right to start with, without slowing down the process, that would be my preference.
I think our business process and using RFP will take care of that, so. Of the law's set up to make it do that.
So, if you're saying, Mr. Morris, that it's set up to, to do what you just mentioned, why doesn't a work group come in?
A work group's got to first decide if we wanna do it, and then they gotta provide information to Eric and them on stuff like to get the propagation study done, to get maps, to, things like that, and then basically kind of come up with regulations or permission. Example would be, for instance, I was gonna recommend that we put Robin on that work group of the park. I asked her a question, she's looking into it. When I heard when we got this proposal about would the park be willing to let us put antennas up on, lay on the observation tower up there, if they could get Wi-Fi in the park? And she was gonna check, she said she thought that kinda makes sense, and she's gonna believe it. How do we get the working group together to answer all those kind of questions? Figure out if we need to go forward with this or not, and of course, address the RFP. I've put together the RFP, I mean, RFP that comes out of the working group, which for the board commissioners to approve. Talk about the funding, what recommend the level of funding and so forth.
I'm completely on board with going forward, but I'm still trying to keep in an open mind as to how we could.
Well, I, I think it's imperative that this commissioner board approve the RFP that goes down. I think by reading that, you get all your questions answered.
Absolutely.
It's not an RFP, it's not.
Well, probably just right now, there's no promise to grant, my last I heard, they're still not really up, saying it's available. I know they said thirty million possibly, but what I'm hearing from the upper level, right now, there's nothing. There's nothing been discussed, there's nothing been promised, it's, especially at the state level, we're in trouble. We're, we're in big, in the D O T, all of us, we're in big trouble.
So, I think that can, it's possible.
There might be something get pushed up next year, we don't know.
But you know, the worst case scenario is we still get a five hundred thousand dollar match. And probably, you know, depending on that propagation study, we might be able to go a long way on me, but be interesting. I mean, Eric wasn't giving any specifics the other night because he hadn't done the study, but you just think of all these peaks in different places, you might could stick towers and stuff, you know, it might not be as hard a problem as you think.
That water takes far tighter, or even a, a barn or living house, you know, certainly like.
One thing, on to your question while I go, just talking about the houses and locations. I think Greg downstairs has a table that shows every house in the county, give you a quick count, every residence, every business, whatever. Then you can look at like what area that's covered now by what we have in the ground. Then you can look at, look at how many houses would be not covered by that.
When's the last update that you did that?
It keeps it updated, I think, pretty much, I think all the tax records and stuff have to keep it updated.
I know we gotta, um, wave out more people building new houses in the state.
There are some, that's what. There's like five going right now. The question then is, you, you know, like, you know how many people, you know right now how many people Eric and them do, or could get the service off of what's currently in the ground. You know, he said in those areas, those nine areas, like the highest one they got's thirty-three percent yet, so. Just because you put it, the sign of somebody don't mean they're gonna take it, and, and that gets out of the control of the, of the provider, whoever they are, because they, I guess they make an estimate or something, but. Just because somebody can get it don't automatically mean they're gonna take it, and like that one. Yeah, the one thing, one thing he did say in that, with that study, they can pre-qualify every individual house on the signal load. That might help, you know, if people know for sure what signal they can get, then that might make it easier to start figuring out how many people really want it for us. I guess there's a few people that don't care a bit about it.
And it is, I mean, uh.
A few, but I, I like to do that.
Other than some who still use their cell phone, if they got the cell phone service, they can carry it forward, didn't you get?
Yeah.
Don't think it's the wrong way for them, but the older generation is gonna carry it forward, I mean.
Yeah, there's just some folks that aren't kind of in that loop, don't refuse.
Yeah, I don't blame them, I'll be back, grew up, grown up. Didn't have that, I probably wouldn't have it if it was now, so.
Yeah, but I think you know whenever anybody, when you get this out there and you get real specific about who can get it, and then they start comparing these like forty-five, thirty-five dollar a month prices to their cell phone. And they might let a few folks over on that.
Maybe a million dollar spectrum is about sixty dollars a month, this I hear, so.
Might come down. Anyway.
As far as putting the five hundred thousand in, the others will make us a quick vote.
I've got a comment I wanna make.
All right.
I've donated one point eight million dollars for River Street, and I haven't seen anything out of it. Uh, that's the reason why I, I can't support the five hundred thousand badge.
Back when y'all done that work area reserve, and forgive me, because I just was not paying attention to that at that time, was there any promises given by River Street in time that, okay, here, by year one, we're gonna have this, year two this, year three this?
Yeah.
And was a projection of several thousand, a few thousand by year five, or?
Also, we're near that.
It was a network.
It was so many, I don't know, I don't know exactly what the number was. They promised a whole lot, and I hadn't seen it.
You gave eight, one point eight earnings, and they have given eight million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
Uh, yeah.
And they've done exactly what they said they were gonna do.
Okay.
And if anybody wants to lay that, lay that down in detail on it, I'll be glad to.
I've got a question.
They were hoping, I think, to get five hundred customers, you know, sort of, and at some point in time, it was never, never really specific, because it's like I said, you can put it down there, but you don't know how many people are gonna take it. By now, they're getting about ten new customers a month off of, but there's a lot more people that could get it, that are already close enough to it to get it. But I don't know what makes them decide when they're gonna decide to get it or not get it, but I.
I don't know, um, there's a road right down St. Drew's, right off of Highway seven seventy-two, it's got several residents lived down it, it's saying River Street, this is a spectrum that runs through there. I believe it's about.
Twenty-two, twenty-three people live on through.
They have all contacts, spectrum, saying they are highly interested, oh, twenty-two, and they will all run down. It runs right past the road on seven seventy-two, but although they decided it wasn't feasible, I don't quite get that, but. Although, maybe I ain't seen something there.
What's so great about this change in wireless technology is that, oh, we were talking about estimating maybe five hundred, maybe three hundred over a certain time, now all of a sudden, we're gonna be talking about thousands within a couple of years. Also, the technology, it blankets, you know, it just blankets everything versus having to go to every individual house, so. And that's a game changer. And we still have that advantage of eventually, based on the demand, like reinvest all that money back in the county that they get from the wireless customers, and we have that advantage of them coming behind it and putting fiber in, making it even better, so.
I'm not, um, I'm just gonna be. Yeah, I won't go ahead and bet you that, I'm not saying I'm against it, uh, I'm not. Uh, but until I get a little bit more comfortable in news from up above us that, yeah, grant money's gonna be available, that's not what I'm hearing right now. I mean, it's like I said, I know you said the budget being more responsible at bar, but there's always a budget amendment. If we done a budget amendment, we can easily explain to our citizens why we're doing it, and I don't think there'll be any complaints. I'm just kinda looking at being on the more, more conservative side right now. Um, I mean, the thing is, we can show we've got the money, it's in the fund balance correct, and you can pull it at any time with a, you know, majority of the board voting. My vote is right now not to put it into the budget, but that's, that's just my vote.
But if you're planning on doing it, it's kind of a improper way budget.
But it's there, we can explain it if we done a budget amendment, so.
Yeah, that. I would, I would argue where that thirty million's there, if it's not there, then that's even more reason to do five hundred K, because, oh, we're gonna have some millions. You know, I mean, it's almost, most more important, because we gotta keep the thing going. The kids ain't got anything to study with.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I agree, and the bad thing is, I don't know what we do, even if we put up two million dollars right now, we're still not gonna get it this year, that's, that's the thing.
Yeah, within a couple of years. But if we delay, everything we delay on trying to get outside funds, it's gonna slow it down, push down more years. That'll start happening real quick. I just.
We may see windows, you know, so.
And I value your opinion, I'm like, I'm.
Well, I mean, I, I value your opinion on it, you had something to say?
I was gonna ask you, uh, her opinion. Budgeted five hundred thousand, whether or not it'll be used, I know we got a work group that we're looking at and forming, and hurdles to get over, hoops to go through before we start actually pushing the funds. But it would be better, would it be better to go ahead and budget five hundred? Or, or to, uh, when the time comes and everything's in place, to do a budget amendment from a finance perspective? Which, which would work better, or neither, or is it six and one and a half thousand or the other?
Whatever the board wants to do, I mean, you gonna take it out of fund balance either way. Unless for some reason, in the first month, we see the revenues are coming in, they shouldn't be, on sales tax and stuff, but you know, until you see that, I can't, I don't know, it'll have to come out of fund. Right now, it's gonna have to come out of fund balance.
You mentioned, um, a couple of hundred thousand and change, that's in economic development that possibly could be used toward this?
Yeah, you can change, the board can change the direction of those funds. They're put, they were put in there for feasibility studies. But the board can decide that they don't wanna, wanna hold off on the feasibility studies and use that for something else, that's up to the board.
I would be interested in Will's input on what's the reason for the feasibility studies might be. Do you know?
Huh?
Do you know why that was put in for feasibility studies?
Uh, it was for the, right over there at Meadows, feasibility study, and then some other ones that may have come up that we need to have. right over there at Meadows, feasibility study, and then some other ones that may have come up that we need to have done. I can't remember what all they were on.
Schools. Schools is a very large portion of it. We done a C, feasibility study on our buildings now, which very few cities is, is, uh,
That isn't it.
His crew is getting completed off as far as the county buildings that we look after. The school looked after the other county buildings, their structures, and we were gonna start that this year of doing a well study on, on those structures. That was probably as much as maybe eighty thousand dollars of that too.
I thought that was coming out of there.
And work that they would have to do to determine a layout and a plan on, on what's that with those structures.
So it sounds like we can look at those kinds and see what degree of urgency there is and should we farm with those studies?
Also, I'm transferring a hundred thousand to Catholic Reserve for public buildings for HVAC roofs or anything that may break. And they've got a hundred some, they have a hundred and a thing out. A hundred some thousand left in there this year with what I'm taking out in the budget, so I mean, you could choose not to transfer that money, I mean, that's
And it's, it's the most important thing going on here. I don't understand. Anybody don't get that, you know, it, it's the most important thing
Difference between.
In this budget. I think the citizens are gonna tell you that too.
Budget amendment, placing that the budget is showing the folks what you are determined what needs to be done. That you are dedicated. Back in San, we'll think about this later. Budget amendment, thanks, sounds right. So if you, if, if you are, if you are in a position to worry, you feel that strongly about the internet being service to the county, then I would recommend that you place it in the budget, or that's showing folks that that's what you're willing to do.
And if you don't do it, you can always do a budget amendment, please back it up.
Always take it back.
That's the appropriate way to do the budget, you know, what budget rules say you should do, not kind of play games where it don't
it don't work out, you, we, we get that money right back into your fund balance.
So if we put it in the budget, anyone who can, or Will answered this, appreciate. If we put it in the budget, when and what kind of decisions would this board need to make regarding those funds?
If we put it in the budget, we're really just, it's in a holding pattern until we get a recommendation on whether we're gonna go forward or not. And we would have to I don't know what the process is, we do an RFP and around who's getting, getting grants and then there, they would take it from applying for additional money, you know, over.
Is there any possibility that we can hear, um, presentation from Stokes Wi-Fi, be able to answer them, ask them questions and get information directly from them?
Mind him or not, like, uh, stream or not? That come along.
Oh, so Windstream and Time Warner and
All those guys could do this too, if they wanted.
Who are else? For the best of my knowledge, has not shown an interest in using this material using this process. Anyone have any information, contrary to that, does anyone have any indication that
I have to look and see.
My team or, or any of these others have shown any interest
I would imagine they're in there.
Trying to provide service to their customers with fixed wireless? I'm not aware of it.
About your mind, I have. I don't play the spectrum for those ones. What I'm saying, I mean, from what I'm saying, I don't like to do.
I don't think Windstream does either, I'm a Windstream customer, it's probably.
Or she has something?
Yes, uh, I, I thought we agreed that, uh, we was gonna put a group together to, to look at this, or we made any decisions.
Would you?
Okay.
It'll be on, it'll be on the agenda Monday.
You gotta, if, uh, the budget's gonna get approved before the group can do its work.
They can do it.
So you gotta have.
They can do it before.
You gotta have funding allocated if you budget properly. They can't do it before, it takes too long, it's gotta have a propagation study and stuff. You know, talking about the one point eight million dollar investment, you know, what that one point eight?
One point eight buys you about forty-five miles of fiber in the ground. We have between two and three hundred miles in the ground.
Two hundred and thirty-one.
So, you know, we talk about one point eight, five hundred K.
And, and that's a lot of money, but when you're talking about telecommunications, infrastructure, those are chicken feed numbers. One point eight and five hundred K. Chicken feed to get a to get a wireless structure put in place or a fiber structure.
Also, the just expense of like that connectivity structure.
Real charge. Measure many now?
I don't have any more comments.
Your ratings.
I should do a turn.
Well, let me, let me kind of, if anybody's interested, share where I am at this particular point. I'm willing to approve this as part of the budget, providing that we have, uh, certain steps that this board will need to follow before a final decision is made. Particularly, uh, input from, uh, a work group, maybe, uh, evaluating the RFP, uh, how it will be worked, uh, those types of things. And I'm not saying if we put it in now, we're just automatically giving five hundred thousand to River Street, because I think we have some more work to do. But I would go along putting it in the budget provisionally, that certain, uh, steps have to be followed before we make a decision.
Can't legally give it to anybody, we have to do an RFP, and that's what we did last time, we had to do it.
Last time. You agree with that?
Heard a lot of talk about a work group. Who, who are we, Will? Commissioner, I'm gonna get to recommend a couple of people to go on that group, or how, how's that gonna be formed, coming up?
Very important.
It's on our agenda for this kind of meeting.
How, how will we populate to, um, those people?
Just remind my suggestions that they will vote on.
Well, could I, could I go back to something that happened a few years ago? We, we put together a, uh, work group, so to speak, to look at some of the same. And it seemed to me like that was, I don't know what I'd use, well, well, another word is not as strong as a disaster. But it just didn't seem to work. And there were too many sort of private agendas, one person running this, other person running that. I think our board would need to put some thought into how we, um, appoint people to this committee, and that's really something that could work there. That's something we could downwind on the eighth.
Just kind of, I think, we'd be looking at who are the, asking ourselves, who are the stakeholders as far as that goes? And getting some expertise on there that can answer questions. And, uh, making up a relevant question. Have one other topic, we're starting that before we go. It's short, so.
I haven't asked.
My finish.
I've heard a part of his, so.
About the board?
Yeah.
Do you have any comments on it? About putting that board together? About putting the board together?
Yeah.
Do you have any comments on it?
Yeah, we need to.
And, and also, um, also, Chris, we need to, um, decide whether we agree, some of us have said we do, some others on putting the five hundred thousand in the budget, but with restrictions.
I'm, I'm just not in favor till, till we have input from people in the community, what they wanted or not. Some of the people would, would even want it. They got, I think, River Street got seven hundred and forty-eight people now.
Two hundred and twenty-eight.
Two hundred and so.
Two hundred and twenty-eight. Those are customers, and then there's multiple people on them.
Two hundred and forty-eight. That was, uh, that's what he said the other night. So that's been, that's been in existence for, what, seven, eight, nine years, and they got that many?
Not that many years.
Went in in oh-seven, I believe.
River Street?
Uh, that'd be thirteen years.
And it's about three or four years ago. It hasn't been five years yet.
I don't know. It's getting close to it, I was coming up on five years.
Just think for around four or five. Are you, they were believing this forward into the verge of restrictions?
Uh, I'm not interested in putting them in the budget.
Mr. Ramon, so, Mr. Ramon and all?
Well, I just think the, uh, group, the working group that Tom talked about will be so important because it's not handled with proper. Just. I think, one year, if we don't have a working group, I think we need to have a person in charge. I'm standing with you. David Turner.
I'm thinking.
I think, yeah, because we've seen what can happen. We have groups that do not work together. We would, we now have four or five different people trying to aid in
Aid the people.
A person.
I wouldn't wanna be on the group person.
Well, I think, like, we should have two commissioners. And have ten members and, uh, ten stakeholders. But I think only, so like Rick was talking earlier, he like he was talking about the vehicle maintenance, that he didn't make two people could, uh, who's gonna make the final decision to be the same way in this working group, one, one person leading the group. And of course, getting input from everybody. Uh, I think he want, someone to be on the group.
Sure, be a logical person.
But I, I, I think I think we can get, the body can get some things, but I think you need to be the person in charge, because you're the chairman of the county commissioners, the county commissioner, the River Streets will be matching funds for five hundred thousand dollars, and who will be giving it to? Commissioners.
Don't hear Commissioner Morris give his concurrence to Commissioner Ramon's suggestion.
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
Don't hear Commissioner Morris give his concurrence to Commissioner Ramon's suggestion.
As far as right now, are you willing to link the five hundred thousand dollars into the budget with restrictions?
Well, I mean, I we get a good working group and you're in charge. And we know that five hundred thousand will not lose, yeah, unless the working group comes back with a very strong.
I think that was ninety-six thousand, but she would use twenty-four. And I've redone it, it's two hundred and ten thousand, nine fifty-one as of today, 'cause I redid my figures.
Okay, well, let me, let me change my thing.
I'm sorry, I, that's the figure I had in April.
Okay.
And I redid it, I did several.
And I thought you were talking about the sales tax, something about.
Capital outlay.
Oh, that's capital, that's.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with current expense.
But the three hundred can be current expense, right?
Three hundred thousand is current expense.
Yeah, okay.
You cannot use capital outlay money for current expense.
Okay.
You can use current expense for capital outlay, but you can't.
Okay, then, but you can, you can use that cap, but that capital outlay money has to eventually go to them, right? Okay. But, because we can't, by law, it has to go to them.
Correct.
It's got two hundred something thousand dollar balance now. Okay, the, um.
I mean, they can request that anytime, if they had something.
We've already funded their capital, total capital program, so, um, I guess, you know, maybe we just tell them we got that fund balance, and if they have an emergency or something, at the end, they can come. So I'd say, um, I'm good with the three hundred, and I'm good with, uh, there are four things that they brought to us. The highest priority of mine would be that one they have about capital, uh, you're talking about classified, uh, employees that getting caught up with everybody else on the party. I don't really have a priority for the other three personally, y'all do, I predict that. And then another thing I was just gonna say is if we were looking at that two hundred something thousand capital fund, if there was some way that we could use some of that, since it's going to them anyway eventually, to, to support these distance learning kind of things, that they're gonna be required to do.
I don't know if that's considered capital.
I don't either, what, can you find out? Find out if there's capital expenditure if we could do to help anything associated with them being able to go to school on the internet. If I could give it to them, then they could help us fund the internet expansion. Why don't you ask that question? Ask if we can, if we gave it to them, if they could use it for internet expansion.
That'd be a very good question to ask based on the amount of grant money they can receive through this COVID. Received in three different areas, and I'm talking about more, what is it, one point eight million dollars they've got? Could be that something is allocating in there to work, it does, uh, uh, internet capabilities for students that are having to stay at home across the list, so.
And the other thing that's kind of related to that is the fact that the Eat Right people are looking at trying to help with distance learning. So if there's some way we could get some more money to them for distance learning, then I'd like to explore how we do that. Maybe just get them to ask, answer that question.
Now, what was it on current expense?
Current expense, just give them the three hundred, I agree with that, yeah.
And that's all, okay.
For right now, that's all, yeah.
Excuse me, be honest, uh, what what exactly would the three hundred do as far as?
Three hundred would just close the gap between what Jake recommended and if he had five hundred difference, then he'd go to about two hundred. Like a hundred sixty-eight.
Puts, puts the counties, the county right now is like one point six percent cut overall after, uh, the increases in fringes. Uh, the, the schools' current expense was more than that, but if you do the three hundred, it brings them more in line of what the county has done to their budget.
It allows them to address those four things that they brought to us, right?
They're two hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Jake's recommendation was cutting on four hundred and sixty-one thousand, two seventy-three, which was a three point fifty-two percent. But if we give them the three hundred thousand that's in the fund balance in current expense fund, that cuts it to one hundred and sixty-one thousand, two seventy-three, a one point twenty-three percent reduction from last year.
Just list what we've done to the county.
What percent does that, what's goes? What percent does that, what's goes?
A reduction of one point two three. Amounts to one hundred sixty-one thousand, two seventy-three. From. From last year.
What was the calculus?
Calculus is, is right in, it was, it was one point six.
Adding some of this stuff back.
Yeah.
And.
That's a lot of numbers, I don't say you can keep up with it anyway, but anyway, I think it was right around one point six.
One point six cuts.
One point six percent. Cut in the county budget.
They've got the schools down to one point two-three?
And, or she will run up over here in a minute to give you a second, but I, I'm trying to recollect something, don't worry.
While she's doing that, one last topic, uh, Mr. Chairman, is I've been reading on revenue, it's, uh, the NCACC's email they just sent out, had a chart in there that showed, um, showed a list of counties, and some of them were filled in, some weren't, on what their revenue estimates were, and they varied, he worked from five percent reduction to twenty percent, so that's all, so. So I think we're okay with thirteen where we're at, based on that. There were a lot of them that were only five or six or seven percent of.
You remember that thirteen percent reduction, you know, we, we got the April sales tax, and it came in higher than last year. See, I was using last year's April figures and taking it down, so.
April's is, you, you want to start looking at it, sales tax? But your, your real numbers is gonna be, uh, your May, June, and July?
Yeah, July and August is gonna be your, because really, April's was for, was for February, January's sales tax, really. They keep us two months behind, even though they say it's April's sales tax, it's really January's.
So that includes Walmart closing?
Only for about twelve hours, I guess, it was February.
I went, I went there.
That would be February.
Couple of days ago, it's all boarded up.
Yeah.
That's all Walmart's, uh, all Walmarts were doing that.
April's would have been February's, earned in sales tax. We'll be interested to see what May and June, but I will get those till July and August.
We don't have a bad quarter to, and everybody knows, it's just a matter of how bad it is. This stupid shutdown.
Like Lee Carter said, this is something we've never seen before. He said, I guess we'll learn, but.
He didn't have any projections to do here?
No.
She's not gonna let me follow this, she's not gonna let me follow January.
No.
And what'd you have?
I just, before we adjourn, if we're getting close, um, you, I think Commissioner Morris asked this, and maybe one other person, about the Friends of Soak Shelter, asking them for an updated report on their financials and just kind of an impact on their budget if they didn't receive that money, which is not recommended in the budget. I emailed that out to you. When I received it from them, I requested it from Leslie Staples, and she sent it pretty quickly. They had a board meeting coming up that worked out. I just want to make sure you received that, and I've got copies if you didn't, just for your.
I'll need to look at it again.
Yeah, I've got the, the breakdown through, it's through April the thirtieth, and then I've got their letter in there about their, their request, so I can give you a copy if you need it.
I recall seeing it, so I need a copy.
Okay. It's not recommended in the budget, but I know we had made that request, and I didn't get that from her, so.
I probably have it on this table.
Eleven minutes left, and I have a motion for a term.
Well, what, what equipment? Hold it, hold it, please. This is June third, right?
You get discussion.
Uh, no, no need discussion, but I thought the plan was to recess this week.
No, tomorrow.
But, but I hope the plan's made.
If, if needed.
I will. Sorry, but.
That's okay.
But I'm sure y'all want to pass the budget.
That's right, that's right. We're gonna stand down, or this is basically here.
What odds would you give to that?
I don't want, I don't want my, I've heard, I've heard a feeling.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Who's speaking?
First.
Okay.
Hold it, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
And I'll give you these real quick, and then I've got those copies, those jogging shoes, copy. Cut this off, if you're stiffing at it already.
Yeah, soon, usually is sooner or later, somehow or the other.